Good evening, everyone. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Homewood City Council for September 12th, 2022. As you can tell, I am not Alex White. So he is not able to join us today. We'll be thinking about him. Wanted to go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask Reverend Tom Sanders of Dawson Memorial to provide our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all rise.
May we pray together? Father, I thank you for every man and woman here in this council chamber to, for their commitment, their sacrifice, for all that they do for this city. Father, we know the greatest commandment is to love you with all of our heart, mind, soul, and strength, and to love our neighbor as we love ourselves. And that's what this group is called to do, to seek you first, and then to take care of the neighbors of this community. And I pray that you give them wisdom and guidance as they discuss the business tonight. And anytime there's a room full of people as this, there's always personal needs, and I lift those up to you as well, for those who are hurting, struggling, whatever the trials that they may be going through, that you will provide grace, strength, and comfort. And Father, we lay all the business before you today and pray that you would be honored and glorified. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Reverend Sanders. Thank you. Ms. Salter, if you'll call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waltney?
Here.
Counselor Geer?
Here.
Counselor Alamon? Counselor Wolverton? Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor, sorry, Jones, you're out of order. But this is, in your order, you normally are, sorry. Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nels?
She is here.
Okay, Counselor Andrews?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President White. Okay, that one's either four absent, be subtle, one.
Okay, great, great. The first item before we get into the reading of the minutes is a proclamation that the mayor has for GYN Cancer Awareness Month, so I'll call on you, Mayor. I believe we have Ms. Betsy Fettner here tonight.
I'm sure.
Okay.
And Ms. Boer.
Ms. Shub.
Perfect, and I will turn this this way and read this proclamation. Whereas gynecological, or GYN from here on out, I was assured I could say GYN, cancers are among the leading cancer killers of women in the United States, and more than 125,000 women will be diagnosed, and more than 33,000 women will die from these diseases this year, and the absence they leave in our hearts will deeply be felt forever. And whereas the Laura Crandall Brown Foundation and their A State of Teal Initiative brings awareness of all GYN cancers to the people throughout the state of Alabama, and whereas the good health and well-being of women in our state and the city of Homewood are enhanced by increased awareness of GYN cancers and their symptoms and treatments. And whereas it is also crucial that all women in our state and the city of Homewood take an active role in learning the symptoms and risk factors associated with GYN cancers, developing healthy habits, and undergoing regular medical examinations so that any occurrence of these diseases may be detected in their early and treatable stages. And whereas we reflect upon the memory of those lost to these diseases, the bravery of those battling these diagnoses, and the need for increased awareness, screening, research, so that women of our state may be spared from them in the future, and encourage all citizens to work together to raise awareness of GYN cancers. Now therefore I, Patrick McCluskey, Mayor of the city of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month throughout the city, and encourage all residents of Homewood to work together to raise awareness of GYN cancers, and do commend this observance to all our citizens.
Thank you so much.
You are very welcome. You want to take? She'll take the picture with us. If you all are more than welcome to say a few words if you want.
Well, I do want to say that we left some little brochures out here that have the signs and symptoms of GYN cancers, and I know you fellas think, why do I need that? I know you have a woman in your life, so be sure to give it to your sister, mother, whoever, your wife, your daughters, so they'll know what to look for. There's a symptom diary in there. So, and so that's out there for you. And also I want to thank Homewood again for lighting up City Hall teal to remind everybody what month it is. I want to let you know that ovarian cancer is particularly deadly. There's no screening test for that. A pat smear does not check for ovarian cancer. So the foundation that we're with with this initiative also is looking to fund people to get an early detection test that's reliable. I will say I'm one of the lucky ones, only about 55% of women with ovarian cancer survive more than five years, and I'm a 17-year survivor of stage III C ovarian cancer. Thank you, and thank you, JJ, for wearing a teal tie. That's our color. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And Mr. Bischoff, you do have the correct color. We have the correct teal, and we're going to light City Hall. Is that correct? All right, okay. Well, without objection, the council fully endorses and supports the proclamation, so thank you, Mayor, for that. Yes, okay. And if you'll bear with me tonight, I'm going to do the best job that I can with the 57 public hearings that we have tonight. So we'll see. We'll get through it as best as we can. Next, we have the reading of the minutes. Is there a motion to dispense with the reading and accept those minutes from August 22nd?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so here's where you have to help me. Mrs. Smith made the motion, and who? Let's see. Okay, Mr. Waltney made the second. Okay.
For the record, Counselor Nels is here.
Yes. Hello. Welcome, welcome. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, by the same sign. That passes now.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero. All right. Okay. Are there any, I don't believe we have any reports from board, on board vacancies. Does anyone know of any, any reports that we need to handle tonight?
We have two open, the close on the 26th.
Okay.
It's a beautification board, Ward Two, and mental health board.
Okay.
Close on the 26th.
On the 26th.
Mental health is at large.
It is, yes.
Okay.
And I did send some information around that we got from the, let's see, the hall, like, there've been a lot of questions about that, so there was an email sent around to you, to jump out. They just want somebody that's eager and willing to serve.
Well, we encourage anyone that could send in their application. We would really appreciate it. So thank you for that, Mr. Sims. Okay, additions to the agenda? I don't, I don't have any personally tonight, so I think we're set. Anybody have anything that is pressing that we need to handle tonight? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Harden, second by Mrs. Nels.
Andrews.
Andrews.
Oh, Andrews.
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews.
Yep.
I thought that was you, Mrs. Nels. Okay. Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same sign. That's eight to zero. Passes, okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, we just had the one item that was handled. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, again, I think that's Mrs. Smith and Mr. Waltney. All right, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, by the same sign. Eight to zero. That passes. Okay, moving into old business. 10:05, 22, public hearing set for September 12th tonight at 6:00 PM to consider annexation into the city of Homewood for 314 Happy Lane, Ketchum Properties, Mrs. Salter and Mr. Burgett. First of all, we would have a report from Planning and Development. Counselor Andrews.
Yes, the committee voted five to zero to recommend resetting the public hearing for September 12th, 2022. The motion was made by Counselor Waltney and seconded by Counselor Nels.
Thank you for that, Counselor Andrews. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And let's see, are there any comments from the public on this? I believe we, Brian, you had some information, didn't you, that was sent to you? I'm not sure. Do we have any, any comments from the public?
I think the Ketchums are here. Did y'all want to?
If you would like to.
There's a sign in sheet.
If you would like to speak and come up and sign in at the podium.
Thanks, guys.
Sure.
I'm Jeffrey Ketchum.
I'm Jaima Ketchum.
You said Jaima?
Jaima, yes.
J A?
M A.
Okay. Sorry, I haven't done this before, just.
Yeah, this is a first for both of us.
Yeah, yeah, provide.
Yeah, so we.
And I failed public speaking, it's like the only thing. I did that in college, and so I'm sorry, I'm not a.
Do you need me to say? Yeah, yeah, gotta get the TV going.
So we've got, no, do we have the, I have them here, the pictures, the house plans, and the.
That's why he's trying to get.
Okay.
He'll put them up there, I'll screen. I'll just second.
I got you.
Sorry.
Do we start with just telling a little bit about the property? Okay, yeah, where is it? It is, okay, so this is kind of something I've found and fell in love with, exploring Homewood. Y'all, we live here, and so have a love for all things home. So I sometimes drive around, and I stumbled across this property. It is, if you go out Oxmore or Lake Shore, and instead of taking a right to go towards the, yes, you would take a left, and it's your immediate left after the, is it Homewood Church of Christ, right there? Yeah, so there are neighborhoods that back up, like, the back of our property backs up to a Homewood subdivision. There's Shades Creek that runs kind of the back of that property. Currently, we have six-ish acres and a house, and it's an old historic farmhouse. I think it's, as much as we can tell, it dates like pre-1900. We're still kind of, it's the oldest house I've worked on, and it's, we've worked on a few. Anyway, so we purchased it initially thinking just like, wow, this is a really cool piece of property. Tossed around a bunch of different kind of ideas. There are people that have owned and thought about doing subdivisions. We've got, we've kind of, we've gotten to know the neighbors and really love the area. It's a little, if you drive down there, it's like you're in the country, but you're not in the country, and would love to kind of preserve that. So our pitch would be to build one house there, and we would like to actually build there and sell where we are now. And so that's kind of our idea. Granted, we have three kids in Homewood, can't move unless we do that, so that's what we tossed around. And then, again, I think we have, these are plans, per, like, it's, we want it to be a pretty, a size, a good-sized home for, because it is, yeah, are you going to show them where that, so that's, what's that street that backs up to?
Huntington, the Huntington neighborhood is, I guess, right there at the bottom of the screen, backs up to the, what we call the bottom of the property. I actually believe that's the south, so yeah, that makes sense. And it is currently zoned R1, and that's what we're asking for, is to keep it.
Yeah, we'd like to keep it, that for sure.
In that regard. It's about a quarter mile down west Oxmore, once you turn onto Happy, so it's just far enough. It's not too far, just a little bit down the road there.
Now, I know that, I have a question. Jefferson County has different designations for zoning than we do, so like where it's zoned R1 for them, does that correlate to NPD? Mike, that's kind of a question for you, I think.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Single-family residents.
It's just single-family, okay, okay. All right, so.
So anything they would do if they were to build more than one, they would have to go through the rezoning process with us, this is the. Yes.
They were annexed.
Have to be subdivided.
Yeah.
And then rezone.
Yeah, and I know we talked about this, I think Jeff came here several months ago, and the biggest issue is the street not being up to standards, and that's been an issue. The guy on the other side of you wants to develop that, but couldn't get permission to get the right of way to widen the street from the neighbors.
Correct, and so like multiple cars going in and out would, it functioned more as needing accessibility, so we were thinking maybe one car, like, one family home would be a little less, I guess it would be, just not needing that wide of a street. I could see a lot of traffic, like, trying to do a subdivision seems, yeah, you're right, though. And we actually found subdivision plans in the attic of the house, so people have toyed with, I think, long-term, if we don't do this, it could potentially turn into a subdivision, similar to what's up the street, but I would.
That's not what our desire is.
That, we do not want that. So that's kind of, hey, we think if we can get it into Homewood, it's a little more protected than if it was even with state and county. Yeah, because they really are very interested in revenue. I mean, we all are, we want, we would like the tax dollars to go to Homewood, for sure, though.
Ask another question. Is the property to the, is your face and standing on Happy Lane, the property to the right of you, is that in Homewood?
No, there's none of that property on Happy.
Only property in the back.
It's the property in the back.
So that's how you're going to do it?
Yeah.
We're touching the back?
Yeah.
But can I also have another question now? Sure. I assume Happy Lane is a Jefferson County road?
It is a.
It is not, oh, it is a private road?
It's not a, Jefferson County doesn't claim it.
Okay, and we don't claim it because it's not ours. So that leads me to the question of how you're going to get your trash picked up.
So currently Jefferson County comes down, sends the big truck, picks up the trash, turns around in the street, and comes back.
But if, but if they're, if y'all aren't a Jefferson County property, are they still going to pick up your trash? Probably not.
No, I mean, the thought would be, I wouldn't not think so. I mean, the thought would be that the Homewood trucks could come down, pick up, and, you know, come back, headed back towards Huntington.
Do our trash trucks pick up on non-city streets? I don't think they do.
They get access to, to, yeah.
They can.
They go into other cities, they go.
Yeah, they got it, yeah.
I think Berkeley.
We got a, we got a something, and we got two or three houses in Mountain Brook on our side of it.
Really?
Yeah.
That's not an issue, as long as they get access.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out.
Yeah, I know, I make sense. I wonder how that all works.
That's true.
Okay, Mr. Sims had a question.
Thank you. I just, for clarification from Mr. Kendrick, because I think if it's a county road, we have access, but if it's a private road, this is the, this is also the question I brought up when we were in committee, which is, we have private roads right now, for example, Abbey Lane, where we're not able to offer trash service. So I just want to make sure from a consistency standpoint that.
Well, he's, he's said something that I wasn't aware of. If the county has access to it presently, if they pick it up now, they'd have the same access.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm just trying to reconcile that, too, because Abbey Lane also said that that HOA would grant us access, which would relatively be the same thing, so I'm just trying to make sure from a consistency standpoint that, I mean, look, I'm, I'm fine with it. I mean, I want trash pickup to happen on Abbey Lane. I'm just trying to make sure we're being consistent in this application, so that's, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, because that, that's kind of where I, and also, I will say, we, but I guess with the Jefferson County trucks, if they're going there already, because we've also had problems with private streets not being developed to the point that they can support trucks, like, we've had problems with that as well, like, certain private roads just aren't built to city street standards, so they're really not supposed to be driven on by giant garbage trucks, but if the other trucks are already there, I would assume that means that.
Yeah, and I think it was just paved.
Yeah, they just resurfaced it. It's, the road's in, the road's in good condition.
It is in good shape.
So who paid to resurface it?
I don't know that. I would, I guess, but I don't know the answer.
Because if it's a private road, somebody, a resident would have to do it.
Let me say this to you. I don't know there's a private road, but the county has never, I didn't know that they serviced it, so don't take that as gospel. I'm not representing, it's a private road.
But they just won't, the county's not saying.
It's ours.
In the past, when the other property was to be annexed by Mr., what's his name?
Phil Mulkey?
Pardon me?
Phil Mulkey.
Mulkey, that's it. He made the comment that the county wasn't maintaining the road, but apparently somebody approved it. I don't.
Well, I would just add, if it's a private road, I mean, I have no survey, I mean.
I don't know that it's a private road, Mr. Sims. I'm going to correct, I want to correct that statement.
No, I appreciate that, and I just want to say, if it is a private road, you know, I would think there would be a process as well, where we could have an agreement which exempts us from liability should the weight of the trucks over time cause any damage. We're, we're not responsible for maintenance on a private road, which is what we've talked about, again, on Abbey Lane. I think it's fine as long as we just have that, you know, waiver granted, and then we can provide the service.
Right.
You know, same as, you know, you, the postal service, or, you know, anyone else traveling that road to offer a service. So that's, I mean, I'm fine with the annexation itself, I just want to make sure that detail is addressed in a way that's consistent.
I'm not sure, I have an app for this kind of stuff, but truthfully, this looks almost like an easement that you're granted to get you access to a road. I don't know, but it's worth figuring out, but it may not be a legal street at all, more than just an easement, that you've got to have access to a legal street that maybe all these people are using. Again, it'd be worthwhile to understand that. I'm just looking at it physically from the, from the app I have, and the size of it makes you feel like it's a more of an easement than anything else. I know the property owner across the street from there, the Humphreys, I know them. Certainly I could put you in touch with them if you wanted to, but anyway.
We have, we talk to Rich a lot.
They're actually the ones that were like, y'all are selling the Mulkey, are you willing? No, so I think they're concerned with, there are a lot of people who.
He's been stopping, Phil, I know he has.
I know.
Okay.
I was going to ask about the police and fire, if that's an issue at all, getting police and fire in and out of there.
I mean, it's a paved road.
It is pretty.
I mean, it's a, the road's 20, I went out and measured it the other day, because I was curious how wide it was. It was over 20 feet wide, and then when you come down the end to our property, I mean, there's plenty of room to turn around, if you flip back around.
That's 20 feet, right?
Roughly, I mean, that's.
Wow, that looks a lot.
I mean, you can, you can pass two cars when you go down it. It's.
It may be like 17, 18, something like, it's, it's a decent size width. It's not a driveway, I guess, is what.
Which, I think, isn't 18 feet the, the minimum width for a city street?
20.
Oh, it's 20?
20.
Okay.
Yes, Counselor Alamon.
I'm just curious in terms of, and I apologize for my tardiness, but if we were to grant this, then what's to prevent neighboring properties, then to then also add, ask for annexation, once that, once it's the logic of it touches Homewood property? And so I just want to think about longer-term implications of whether we grant this, that it opens us up potentially to other folks saying, hey, we want to be in Homewood 2 now.
The property next to it is in Homewood.
Behind it.
It's on the very back corner.
But that's it, but then once you go to the front, then everything touching this property now.
There's actually a firing range across the road.
And so once we open this up, this opens up to several more properties beyond this one that's barely touching.
I mean, yeah, our property is, is bordered by two, two, two other properties that are not, parcel 348 and 350. So it's, you know, it's, it's already, what's, two, most of the land is already touching Homewood, and I guess would have the same, I don't know exactly how those rights are granted to have.
What are the negatives? I'm just curious, just as a person who's always looking for, like, looking at property, the negatives to that, especially a city that's like landbound, really, you know, where we're always wanting to grow, grow our schools, grow our money, and like, what, is there a negative to adding to property, adding properties to Homewood?
The services we have to provide to additional.
Yeah, because you have to add to those.
And our schools are pretty much.
Maxed out, yeah, yeah. I was just curious, so I'm like, how that pays off.
How, so how many other houses are on the street?
I saw a picture earlier, yeah.
There we go.
Houses on the street, you have the one at parcel 354, the Humphreys across the street at 321, and then, I forgot the name, up there at parcel 357, that's actually just one home, maybe a shed in the back, or barn. It's probably a shed. So as far as like, us being 314.
Just scroll down just a touch. Hold on.
Brian, can you scroll down?
Yeah, so the, the property to the right already touches Homewood, 433 down here already touches Homewood, so that's, I guess, the increase, you know, opportunities for people to be here down the lawn would be 348 and 350.
Well, I think the people across the street would have a good, a good case, and then it'll just, you know, there, and there is another road, if we could, if you could kind of zoom it in, there's another road back there. You know, it is pretty rural, I guess, is my, is that main thing, and there is, there's a, there's some sort of firing range, or that's what the sign that's posted says, kind of across the street and on down.
Yeah, we've met that, the man that lives there, and he's very old. He says he used to have it out there, just like, it's, yes, yes, he drives his four-wheeler around, kind of, or golf cart. I would say it's probably potential, if you were to annex each property in, the addition of, I don't know, we're counting like, I mean, maybe 10 houses, you know, which would be, it is additional, but it's not necessarily, I guess, a huge addition. Now, if you were to say, oh, yes, we're going to annex it, and then we're going to turn our property and add 20 houses, like, that's a whole nother story, which is not what we want, for sure. I think there are, it's also, well, anyway, it would, it could potentially, yes, add.
Well, I'd say I'm not against that, I just want us to have a full sense of what could happen.
For sure.
In, in our decision-making process, that's all.
Yeah.
At the same time, we're landlocked, and that's always seemed to be a problem for us.
Yeah.
Six and a half more acres in our land, and our, we just have such a problem, not able to get, you just.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like our people and like the incomes of our families keep getting, I mean, we're in the, we watch what's going on. It's like we have all, more money coming in. I mean, people are saying we're pulling in more square foot than Mountain Brook, which is crazy. So I would think that, and I think. is crazy. Um, so I would think that, and I think too, like, residential is different than commercial land, you know, like, we have all this, I don't, and I don't know if we could ever pull, I think residential is positive. Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, commercial seems a little less, I'm not in commercial world, but...
We like both.
Yeah, y'all do?
We like both, yeah. But, yeah, but mainly, I think, um, Counsel Gear summed it up for me, I mean, that this is a school system.
Yeah.
It's the biggest thing that we're, have to take into account. Um, okay, were there other, uh, parts that you wanted to present, or is that...
We had, we had drawings of a house, but, you know, we...
Y'all probably don't care about that.
The plan is just one, one residential house?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And then the older home, depending on, you know, what y'all would advise, I would love to keep it as like, sort of like a mother-in-law suite to the house, so I wouldn't, I would love to not tear it down. But, you know, I also know I'm kinda asking for extra anyway, so if y'all don't feel comfortable with two on there, then we could, um, it could be like a carriage house.
That would go to the BZA.
Mr. President.
The second structure would go to the BZA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Or, Parten President. I had a question about fire access. So, you said the road was eighteen feet. However, will that, does anyone know, would that allow a fire truck to get down the road? And, and if it does, is there a fire hydrant there that they can access? Because I don't wanna see a potential long-term problem there that requires us then to pipe a fire hydrant down, or part, I don't even know how that works. I don't, I didn't see Chief here to...
How that typically would work before building, where it could be issued to fire folks, and Mr. White, too, he can speak better too than I can, but typically, they would have to sign up for it, but it has adequate fire, access to fire service.
That's actually a problem. Um, we would have to leave a fire department. If, if, if a, um, if, if a, what do you call it, spigot, uh, the fire hydrants needed down there, they may have to foot the bill to pipe it down there. The city wouldn't do that.
Okay.
But it didn't, in no case would the city do that. Um, it may be a situation where they would pay for it to be put in, and the city may maintain it if the city needs it to protect other properties in the area, but if not, they would be on the, for maintaining the...
Well, I will say, the other night, in our budget discussions, we were talking about the renting of the fire hydrants because they belong to the Water Works Board, and the chief said he has a, he, they don't accept new, because we don't wanna, we, we're, we have no interest in paying for a fire hydrant for their house.
That's right.
So, we probably would not do that, just based on his, what he said the other night in, in the budget hearings, because he said that we turned down...
Would not do what? Sorry.
Um, so we rent our fire hydrants from the Birmingham, the, from City of Birmingham Water Works Board, and the other night, and so we pay rent on each fire hydrant that is in the city. So, we typically do not accept new fire hydrants when people try to get us to take them, because that means we have to pay to maintain them for the rest of time and pay rent on them. So, that would sort of be something that would be on y'all, um, because we would not likely do that. And I just, I did text Brandon to ask him about how wide a street has to be to get the fire truck down, but he hasn't...
Yeah, I thought it was twenty. But, and if that house across the street is there, there, it would seem there would have to be a fire hydrant right there.
I'm curious to see how, what's the distance?
I need to look. I mean, I honestly don't know where the fire hydrant is. Can you go back to that road picture real quick?
I can't hear you. Get up to the mic.
Could you go back to that road picture real quick? There may be one right at the Y with Blackstock.
Which picture? Sorry.
I think he means the animation.
The road, the road picture, Brian, the picture of the street.
Google Maps.
Google Maps, I believe you were just on it. Yeah.
There is a fire hydrant on, at the intersection of Happy and Blackstock.
Yeah.
It's on the, um...
Happy and where?
Right.
Blackstock.
Yeah, right there.
Is it, is this there? I see it on the fire hydrant.
Yeah, right there. Yeah.
There you go. Saved you some money.
Thank you.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. All right, any other items you wanna discuss?
No, excuse our ignorance. We don't know what else to say, so if y'all have other questions, we have the answer.
This is a...
Bringing up lots of questions.
Yeah, exactly.
I think if we weren't to come and do this at some point, it would be someone else, you know, as far as, I mean, it is a neat little space, so...
My question right now is, do we, do we need to get answers to some of these questions
about like, fire service and things like that before we make a decision?
I was gonna say the exact same thing. I feel like we need to have...
I mean, I feel like some of these things are kinda up in the air, and like, we do actually need to get some clarification from the people who actually know the answers, because I, I did text Brandon, but I haven't heard back from him yet.
And Berkeley, I'd like to hear from Berkeley, too.
Yeah, yeah, because, um, it'd be nice to talk to Berkeley about the trash situation and that, just all of those things, I feel like, need to be addressed.
Yeah, well, I would assume we need to complete the public hearing and then either carry it over or send it back to committee. I mean, that would be the...
Can I ask one question, just 'cause I'm curious? Um, other houses where maybe the size of the driveway or street, I've worked on some where they like to try to get them up to, how do y'all deal with, I guess, like, if we were able, like, because let's say it does come down to a width of the road, I'm just curious, um, like, if it was a road that needed widened or whatever, and, or how do you service that? I mean, is there a way to do that, if that was the only issue?
Well, I, I think, because we've had streets in the past, like, like Nick mentioned, there is a street that has townhouses, right? Isn't that the Abbey Lane? Isn't that townhouses?
It, it's actually single-family.
Single-family, and, and, and so that, the fire truck, because it, it's not, it's not a city street, so it's not built to support that, so the trash trucks, it can't support the weight of the trash trucks. Um, I don't know, the answer to that. That's kinda why I'm like, I think we need to get some more answers before we say yes or no, just because we need to make sure that we're not selling y'all something that we can't deliver, I guess.
Yeah, because I think in committee, we were more focused on, you initially came with a lot of houses, and we were trying to work through that, and then now you're coming back with a single, like, one, one house, which is much better plan, uh, but I, I, I think we failed to, to gather all this other information
Okay.
that will, will help us, uh, in making a decision on it.
Because we can work on our end, too, as far as those questions, and whether, you know, if there's solutions to those things, if that's what we're concerned with. But if y'all are, you know, like, this isn't gonna work, I don't want...
Yeah, I don't think it's that at all. I just feel like, um, because neither Berkeley nor Chief Hill nor Chief Ross are here tonight, and all three of them kinda have parts to play in that. Um, so I feel like we need to talk to them and get answers to the questions that we're asking and the questions that y'all have, so that we can give you good information.
Yes.
Um, I just feel like that's probably the best way to go at this point.
Okay.
And we'll all be back here tomorrow night for budget hearings, so we can talk to them.
Don't tell anybody our house is for sale.
Not yet. People will be beating down your door.
I would just add, too, that the discussion, you, you referenced Counsel Andrews about talking to Berkeley. If it is a Jefferson County road, he seems fine in committee with servicing that. But if it's a private road, then that's different than what we've investigated, but...
I gotcha.
If we figure out who, who owns the road, then we can also in turn tell you what the process would look like for widening if necessary, because we just, we don't have that information of who owns the road.
If it's private, is it considered like a driveway, and you have to, like, take your trash to that end, or is it, no, that's not?
Well, no, it's just a pri-, yeah, yeah.
I, I gotta, I mean, I'm looking more at the Blackstock road that's been pulled off of it. I mean, surely whoever did this when they did it had to get permission from some government entity to go in and put subdivided lots, so I gotta believe maybe it's a county road.
Yeah, and the fact that they're named...
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could have addresses on there.
I mean, we have addresses on private streets.
All right, okay.
It definitely got paved, whether that was a, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, are, are there other comments from anyone else from the public tonight?
Thank you.
Okay, hearing none. Uh, Mr. Kendrick, would the appropriate, uh, way to handle this would be to continue it or close the public hearing and send it to committee?
That's really the council's call, but I'd suggest we have the first reading if you're gonna consider it.
What is the pleasure of the commit, of the council?
Why don't we just, instead of, well, I mean, I guess we could send it back to committee, but if it's already here, I don't, I don't have an issue with carrying over the public hearing, and then we can get our questions answered.
Yeah. And we have a week, two weeks, really.
Yeah.
So, we'll carry over, uh, so we'll carry over, uh, this item, um, without objection.
You're carrying over on the council agenda?
Yes.
Did you close the...
Okay, so we will not have, um...
Close the public hearing?
I, I don't think we'll have our first reading, um, on it, since we're carrying it over.
And are you waiting to open the public hearing?
Yes. Yes, we're gonna continue the public hearing, because I'm not closing it. We're gonna let the council president deal with this when he gets back.
Exactly.
Okay, so, uh, so ten oh five twenty-two, um, thank y'all for being here. We're gonna continue the public hearing, and we're gonna carry it over without objection. Uh, and then we're gonna move on to our next public hearing. Uh, oh six oh eight twenty-two, uh, public hearing set for tonight, for consideration to remove zoning restriction. Uh, PR two C Plan Residential District, conditional from eleven sixteen Hollywood Manor Drive. Uh, Joseph Miller, Rose Harris is the owner. Uh, we have a report from, uh, Planning and Development. Uh, Mrs. Andrews.
Yes, uh, the committee voted four to zero to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counsel Sims and seconded by Counsel Elms.
Thank you for that report. Uh, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at six forty-two. Uh, comments from the, you know, we wanna be concise with our time. Uh, comments from, uh, the public.
Have you not signed the answer? Have you not signed the answer?
Yes, um, Joey Miller, Civil Engineer, Land Surveyor, Three River Chase Ridge, Hoover three five two four four. Uh, I'm representing Mrs. Harris. This is, uh, she has purchased lots eight and nine in the Hollywood Manor subdivision, and in two thousand eight, the, the owner then had a covenant put, I guess that's what you call it, uh, conditional restrict- restriction put on it, so that only town home, only two townhomes could be built on lot nine. So, for us to be able to build a single-family house on, we're gonna subdivide eight and nine into one large lot, but for us to be able to build a single-family house on that one large lot, we have to first remove the zoning restriction that has restricted it to only a townhouse, or two townhouses, I should say. And so, that's why we're here. It's, it's kind of a cleanup kind of thing, but it's, we filed a resurvey that's been approved by the Planning Commission, and it's subject to y'all removing that zoning restriction. We've also filed an amended development plan that's subject to y'all removing that zoning restriction. So, that's what we're here for, is to try to remove that restriction. We're glad to answer any questions y'all might have.
I just have, well, you probably don't know the answer to this, because you're not the one who did it, but it's a weird thing to put a con, restriction on.
You, you have to think about how it was in two thousand eight. People were starving to death that were in this business, and he thought he was having, that this was a good way to be able to build something somebody would buy. Now, you know, I mean, that's...
See, this is a narrative that, uh, fourth floor provided that I forwarded to you that kinda spells out the history. Uh, previous owner was Rod Harbin, who came to the city in two thousand eight and asked, lot nine, that the city allowed lot nine to be built to townhouses.
Okay, and so the rest of the lots in that, because they're all single-family homes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, right, okay.
Yes, this was, these are the last two lots that were left.
Right.
And so, he was...
Right next...
They're taking lots eight and nine and putting them into one lot.
One lot, and building one now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Sorry, I assume, I don't know why I'm asking all these questions tonight. Um, I assume the neighbors in the neighborhood are all supportive of this.
Yes, they all came to...
I've not heard anybody complain about anything so far.
Well, I was gonna make a point to the council that the neighbors came in force at the Planning Commission meeting. I've asked the question, and everybody, they didn't come up to speak to go on the record, but they all raised their hand when I said, are y'all in favor of this?
Yeah, right.
Exactly, yeah. This is a, a welcome addition there. Okay. Okay, any, any other questions? Okay. Uh, any, uh, other comments from anyone else in the public?
Okay.
Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Uh, comments from the council?
I mean, I assume the correct motion is not to rezone, but to remove the zoning restriction. Is that the correct motion?
What you're actually doing is you're amending the final development plan.
Okay.
That's the process that, uh, and that final development plan spells out that this will be built for one single family.
Okay, so, remove the conditional, uh, restriction and allow a single-family home to be built on one lot? Okay. I would make that motion.
Hold on a second.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
So, let, let's, um, so let's have our first reading?
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
This is an ordinance to amend the final development plan for the PRT, PR two C zoning for the property located at eleven hundred to, to eleven sixteen Hollywood Manor Circle. Parcel ID describes, whereas the Planning Commission of the city has favorably recommended the amendment to the final development plan for a PR two C zoning for the property located at one 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 six Hollywood Manor Circle. Whereas the Planning Commission recommends that the attached development plan, attached as Exhibit A, be approved to amend the final development plan for Hollywood Manor. Now therefore be ordered, and by the city as follows, that the final development plan previously adopted by ordinance twenty-three eighty on December twenty-second, two thousand eight, for the PR two C zoning be amended pursuant to the development plan attached as Exhibit A. And two, that from and after the enactment of this ordinance, that the property be restricted by the amended development plan attached as Exhibit A, and that the restrictions imposed by P, uh, the ordinance twenty-three eighty of the City of Homewood adopted on twenty, December twenty-second, two thousand eight be, uh, be repealed. Section three, that September twelfth is the time and place for the public hearing, at which time the proposed amended development plan will be discussed, and all persons, interested parties may be appear and be heard. Section four, that the clerk shall give notice of the time and place of the public hearing as required by law. Section five, any part of provision the ordinance declared to be unconstitutional, invalid by the Court of Compete Jurisprudence, and all parts remain in full force of effect, and that the ordinance become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council, or is otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Uh, so is there a motion for unanimous consent?
So, moved.
Second.
Moved, uh, made by, uh, Mrs. Smith, seconded by Counsel Andrews. Uh, roll call, uh, vote, please. Ms. Salter.
Uh, yes, sir. Counsel Gwaltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel Gear?
Yes.
Counsel Alamon?
Yes.
Counsel Sims?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Elms?
Yes.
Counsel Andrews?
Yes.
Counsel Harden?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Are we still eight to zero? Yeah.
Yeah. And a motion...
No, we're nine. Nine to zero. Okay, so that, uh, unanimous consent passes nine to zero. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry. Yeah, it just, we're about to vote on the actual motion.
Oh, okay. Uh, move, uh, Mrs. Smith, that was the second.
Second.
Ms. Andrews. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Gwaltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel Gear?
Yes.
Counsel Alamon?
Yes.
Counsel Sims?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Elms?
Yes.
Counsel Andrews?
Yes.
And Counsel Harden?
Yes.
Okay, hearing that, that passes nine to zero. This ordinance twenty-eight forty-eight. All right, moving on to our next one. Zero eight zero eight twenty-two, public hearing set for September twelfth, uh, for consideration of condemnation of the structure at twenty-five sixty-two Eighteenth Street South. Uh, Mr. Pew, uh, first of all, let's get a report from Public Safety. Mr. Gwaltney?
Yes, sir. The committee met on September twelfth at six p.m. and voted four to zero to refer this item back to the council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counsel Elms and seconded by Counsel Gwaltney.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gwaltney. Uh, Mr. Pew, uh, let's, let me go ahead and, um, open the public hearing. I'm not gonna tell you what time it is. Uh, so we opened the public hearing, uh, comments from the public, and why don't you go ahead and start us off?
Yes, sir. Uh, Brian, yeah, thanks. If you recall, this is the unsafe condition. It was the facade that had detached from the front of the building, was in danger of falling. Uh, Brian, next speaker. This, uh, the owner, Jared Lewis, presented an engineered plan to make repairs. This is the condition of it from the outside now. They're, they're not, they're not a hundred percent sure what their plans moving forward are, but they've abated, and this is from the inside. They just rebuilt the front, uh, so the nu-, the nuisance is abating.
Mr. President.
Okay, so, uh, what would be your recommendation?
I would recommend to drop the item.
Okay. So, let's, let's go ahead and, um, keep the public hearing, uh, open any other comments from the public. Yes, sir?
I didn't understand what you said. What was the recommendation? Drop the item? Okay, that's mine.
Yeah.[1782.13]
I'm Eddie Griffith.
If you come up here, you have to sign in.
I am Eddie Griffith, 211 Hollywood Boulevard. I did...
Come up here twice, you've got to sign in twice.
I will. I just wanted to point out that as modest as this building is, it is a contributing structure to the Rosedale National Historic District. And when these come up, they do need to... That needs to be found out before we do any more demolition of buildings in Rosedale. So, thanks.
Maybe we could have that map... Make sure that the zoning department or building has the contributing structures map and...
Yeah. Yeah, that was the intent of us doing that map, too.
Okay. They can reference. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel?
Yeah, I was just going to make one comment. Mr. Lewis was here earlier but was not able to stay for the meeting. He did recommend... Or referenced that he was making all the repairs needed, and then Mr. Pugh would speak on the status of those repairs. He did make an effort to be here, so...
Yeah, and it was clear at committee meeting that he... It was really a timing issue on his part to get it accomplished, and it was really not a negligence part. Okay. Okay.
Moved to drop.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Smith, motion to drop. Mrs. Andrews, seconded. Any other...
I just want to state that I appreciate him getting that done quickly. We struggle with so many people who don't do what they say they're going to do when they say they should do it, and I sort of appreciate that.
Yeah, and we're moving up with the construction there, so it was critical that we handle it quickly. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same sign. That's nine to zero. That passes, and that is Resolution 2140.
It's not a resolution.
Oh, we don't have a resolution?
It's just dropped.
Oh, it's just dropped? Okay. So, we're just dropped. Sorry about that. Okay. So, we're dropped. That is not 140. Okay. Moving on to our next public hearing. We're halfway home. 140822. Public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 207 Mecca. Debbie Petito. Okay. And we get... First, we have a report from Special Issues. Mrs. Smith?
Yes. We met on August 29, and committee voted four to zero to refer this item back out to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Ms. Andrews and seconded by Ms. Geer.
Thank you for that report, Counselor Smith. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and comments from the public. Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am. So, you can go ahead and introduce yourself, and we know who you are, but you go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Debbie Petito. My husband and I have lived at 207 Mecca Avenue for almost 50 years. We've been married for almost 50 years, and I've taught for almost 50 years. So, I wanted to say that, you know, as a teacher, the thing that we don't want to hear from our students is, "Oh, I didn't know I made that mistake." So, I'm not going to say that to you tonight, being totally honest. I really did not know. But my husband, Charlie, has a very compromised situation. He just got out of surgery. I have a letter from his orthopedic surgeon. So, with that in mind, I had... We were doing a fence for the backyard, and I was talking to the gentleman who was building the fence for us, that it would be conducive for Charlie to be able to garden. He's always gardened. There used to be a joke that every morning before he went to John Carroll to teach, that he would cut down a tree. He loves to garden. So, I didn't want to take that away from him, and I wanted him to have access to our backyard. I brought pictures. So, this... Can you show the front of the house first? So, go back. This is our...
Back up.
Okay, right there. This is our steps going to the backyard if you're coming from our screened-in porch, and I don't want him to be able to go down those. And then, there's a picture that I took of our basement steps, and you can also see why when we get to it. There it is. That goes into our basement, so I don't want him to be able to access that either. So, coming out of our front door... There. We just laid sod, so it would be more even for him. Now, coming around, we had two driveways attached to our house. Well, the old driveway, which is where the issue is, and then we built a new driveway on the other side of the house. So, I've made the old driveway be more like a walkway so that he can, you know, have access to the backyard. That's the fence. It's about four feet, I think, and I made it open, so I'm not trying to keep anybody from seeing anything or keep anybody out. I just wanted him to have more or less a railing so that he could walk along to the backyard and get to the backyard. I have made a copy of the letter from the surgeon, and I have a copy for everyone. I didn't know how to pass it out to you.
Clerk, you can hand it out.
So, that... The grassy area is the old driveway?
Yes, it has now the pegs.
It has pegs or something.
I just have it done.
I did drive by as well earlier, and Brian, if you go back to that prior picture, there's just one thing I want to reference for everybody to see, which is I was most... I was curious about where the fence actually terminated, you know, in proximity to the road. And it's a little bit hard to see in this picture, but you can see it actually ends at the back of that truck. So, it's a good, maybe, 15 feet off the roadway. So, I just want to reference that as well, that it doesn't go all the way to the road. Just an observation I wanted to share.
So, it's more of a railing. It's not an enclosure to the front yard?
No.
Okay.
No. How do they feel about it? The only thing that they asked was that we originally... You know, the property's been surveyed, and I sent a copy to Mr. Pugh, but they asked that we move it even farther in. So, we did.
Farther towards their house?
Toward our house.
Oh.
But I complied with that. But theirs, well, you can't see, but... And on the other side, I mean, all of our neighbors... I didn't say this before, but my husband's already fallen twice, which caused him to have to have this last surgery. And so, our neighbors are all aware and have been understanding about it.
I'm sorry, can I get clarification?
Sure.
Something was... Did you say you've already moved the fence once?
Well, before it was built, you know, we went to the neighbors in the White House, the big White House, and, you know, just made sure that they knew what we were going to do. And we showed them where it was going to be, and they just asked that we move it. It was only a few inches.
Okay. So, that was in consultation with them prior to building it?
Yes.
I understand. Thanks.
Who moved it closer to your house? To your apartment? Who moved it closer to your house?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
I guess I had a question about the person who built the fence, but certainly, we don't expect for you to know what our ordinance is, but the person who built the fence would have pulled a permit and should have known what our ordinance was and known not to build past the front of the house, correct?
Yes.
That has become my knowledge now. I did not know that then. I will say that in talking to all of our neighbors, I mean, they're all aware now because I've made them aware, but, you know, a lot of the houses have fences, and no one knew that you needed a permit for a fence, you know, so...
But the people building the fence know that. That's my point.
I understand what you're saying. I'm not arguing with it.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, any other questions from Mrs. Petito? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing. Comments from all of you?
I will say that coming in tonight, I was not sold on the hardship, because that's based on what this is, is based on your hardship. But after seeing the letter from Mrs. Petito's husband surgeon and now seeing... I don't think I saw... I don't know. I don't remember that picture from the committee meeting, but... And the fact that it is, like you said, off the road, I do understand that she does have a hardship, and I can understand, having had a parent that had balance issues. I do understand the need for, you know, her to feel more safe with him going to the back of the house.
So, we would add any motion that fence would be removed upon, which I just want to... This is not this specific case, but I want to mention that we have two referrals on the referral agenda for next week, for front yard fence variances, one of which came to us, we granted, with the amendment that they would remove the fence upon leaving the house. They have left the house. They did not tell the person who bought the house, and the person is now applying. They have no hardship at all. And so, this ordinance in and of itself, I know it's leaving us and heading to the BZA, but it's just very problematic. You know, I feel like we've opened the door, and, you know, as Mrs. Petito said, nobody in the neighborhoods know, and the proliferation of front yard fences is going to add to that. And again, this is not to this specific case, just frustration in general, especially about the one on Roseland. But we do have two referrals for next week for two more front yard fence variances.
For this particular case, though...
I agree. I'm not speaking specifically in this case.
But I'm also just wondering, even this provision of... I mean, I'm not sure the potatoes plan on moving anytime soon, so I'm not sure how we could make anyone build... Take anything down if we grant this for granting... I mean, based on the hardship, but I think it's also unrealistic to assume that this would get taken down.
Why? If it's against... It's out... It goes back... It's the same thing as a pole sign. It's out of ordinance. It's out of compliance with the new owner.
But not by these current owners, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm... Right. No, I'm saying upon selling, upon moving, when they're no longer the property owners...
The stipulation was you had to take it down.
You've got to take it down. It's the same thing as a pole sign.
You know, we're not anticipating that that's going to happen.
No, I'm not wishing that. I'm just saying, you know, we went through this a couple of years ago with this house on Roseland, and this family was going to live there forever and raise their child, and that's why we gave them the front yard fence. They came back twice, and then they moved and didn't tell the people who bought the house they've got to take the fence down. So...
Well, they'll need to remove it. They'll need to remove it.
But she'll be back next week. She's one of the referral items, so...
Got it.
I'm not speaking to this specific case, and I agree with Ms. Smith. I was not, you know, necessarily sold until tonight, so I agree with Ms. Smith.
Counselor Jones, I would just add, too, there was also an email that I received that forwarded to Ms. Salter, that forwarded to council right before this. So, just want to reference that because I know it was at last minute, but it was also in favor of the variance being granted.
Yeah, that was a neighbor, I believe.
It was Mr. Hill who's here. He's lived in Ward 5, but that's...
Thank you for that. Okay. Okay. Any other discussion on that? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. I heard Counselor Alamon, and I heard Counselor Harden.
Point of clarification?
Alamon, Harden?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a stipulation that it comes out attached to this?
Yes.
I didn't get clar... Okay.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, that's a condition.
And Ms. Petito, all that means is if down the road, y'all should decide to move somewhere or sell the house at that point in order, since the variance is granted for y'all, the fence would just need to come down at least to the back of the house, but that wouldn't be until y'all leave the house at some point.
The front edge of the house.
Yeah, yes, right, right. Yeah, back to the front edge. Yeah, it would just come to the front corner of the house.
Yeah, front building line.
Yeah.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same sign. Okay, that's nine to zero, and that is Resolution 22-140. So, that passes. You're excused. I've always wanted to say that to a teacher. Okay. Moving on, 150822. Public hearing set for tonight to consider declaring the property located at 327 East Glenwood Drive a public nuisance due to violation of ordinance 19101750, excessive growth. Report first from Mr. Gwaltney.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, after hearing from Scott Cook, the committee voted four to zero to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Wolderton and seconded by Counselor Harden.
Okay, thank you for that report. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We have comments from the public. You want to go ahead and... You want to start?
Yes. This was a complaint-driven issue. Neighbors called about the yard. Sent notice out to Carol Johnson, who is the owner of the property at the same address, 327 East Glenwood Drive on June 23. They signed for it, got notice back. Daughter contacted me about the situation, was very apologetic, but was not able to get the yard cleaned up. So, we're here now. I sent her notice and posted the property of tonight's public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
And Scott, I assume they know that if... Do they know that if the house is declared a nuisance, that we'll send out there and put a lien? They know the...
Yes, yes.
Okay. Ooh, they better get that const roll off the roof.
Mr. Harden?
So, Mr. Cook, we'll have a lien on it so if the house does sell at some point in the future...
That's correct.
We get our money.
That's correct.
Okay, and it is not...
Well, no, let me, let me rephrase that, no. It goes on the property tax, not as a lien when it sells, it goes on the property tax. So when the next property tax comes due, then it has to be paid then.
The lien will be on that.
Yeah. So we don't have money tied up.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cook. Any, any other questions from Mr. Cook?
I assume your recommendation is to declare it a nuisance.
Good. Okay, anyone else from the public care to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna close the public hearing. And comments from the council?
Just thank you for your note today about this house, and I've moved to declare public nuisance.
Okay, Counselor Gere. And I believe that was Counselor Nelms.
Can I ask another question?
Hold on. So it's been motion seconded, discussion. Yes, Mr. Harden?
As you, as I told you earlier about another house that needs, again, probably we're gonna find out that we're gonna have to do this at least a second time. How do we, is that, do we have to declare it a public nuisance a second time?
Yeah, once it's abated, happens again, we gotta go through the same process.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, nine to zero, that passes. Resolution 22-141. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Okay. Moving on to 09-07-22, bid opening was held today at four o'clock for Mecca Avenue sidewalks. Mr. Smith? And this is gonna be probably your recommendation for the next three items as well.
That's correct, so for the Mecca Avenue sidewalk project, we didn't receive any bids for that. Which will allow us to negotiate with contractors that typically do sidewalk projects in Homewood. So my recommendation is gonna be to carry over for two weeks, and hopefully within, in the next week or so, we can find someone.
Okay.
And negotiate.
Okay, so on the council agenda, the recommendation is to, is to carry it over.
I have a question.
And, hold on one second, and then, and then we will build, we'll be discussing this in, in budget hearings, anyway. So that'll be a part of our discussions, but we, we're not probably gonna have all of the answers by Capitol, so it's probably gonna be another meeting next week, when we're trying to wrap things up. So that's, that's when we'll, that's when we'll address it. Yes, Ms. Gere?
Did we receive bids for the other sidewalks?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to those, we'll get to those.
I was just gonna ask Kale that question.
Yes, we did.
Okay, and do you think it was because of the difficulty in installing the sidewalk? Or do you have any idea?
Yeah, I have some ideas. It's a few reasons, I think, why we didn't get bids. One of them is that we're, it's just that, it's kinda where we are in the construction industry. Everything is expensive, if, if folks can even get to it. I know the contractors who bid on our Stormwater projects actually did our most recent sidewalk projects, and I asked why they didn't bid on the sidewalk projects also. And their response was that they just didn't have enough people to do it. There's a whole lot of work out there and not enough people to do it.
Yeah, I, I think this, the money that the federal government gave out has got those contractor, every city's doing this, I'm sure. Contractors have gotta be blown up that are doing this kind of work. Too busy.
Yep.
Okay, so for 09-07-22, any other questions from Mr. Smith? Hearing none, we'll carry that over without objection, and then we'll just send that to the budget hearings to, to work through, once we get a report, but we'll carry it over on the, on the council agenda.
So we're carrying it over here and sending it to budget?
That's right. Okay, and then, moving on to 1007-22, bid opening, and that was at 4:10, so it was a fun afternoon. And for Delcris Drive, so what's the report from, from here?
For Delcris Drive sidewalks, we had one bid, C, B, and A construction, for the total amount 558,766. And so my recommendation would be, since we only had one bid, we can negotiate with that specific contractor and see if they can reduce their price. So let me go through that process with them over the next couple of days.
It, so is that a, isn't that a situation where we reject the bid? We reject their bid, and then you pursue negotiations with them?
To negotiation, right.
All right, well then, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, 'cause we, if we, we can't vote to accept the bid, because that would be accepting 558,000 dollars.
Right, right, sure, yeah, yeah, no, my recommendation was gonna be...
Which they're not going to do.
So my recommendation would be to carry it over, to see, and, and talk to them to see if they would be interested in, in a price reduction.
Because if, if they're not willing, and that's the number, do we wanna consider that next time?
That's right.
Then we reject, yeah.
Or, or, or accept.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. So I believe it would be the same for, for this item, to, with, carry it over without objection, and then also send it to budget hearings pending the report that we get from you probably next week. We'll carry that over, okay, then moving on to 1107-22, bid opening again for Huntington Stormwater culvert replacement.
We had one bid for this project also by Southeastern Seal Coating in the amount of $1,041,220.
Yeah, I was, I fell out of my chair also.
I, I was able to talk to this contractor this afternoon, and he said that they would certainly be willing to give it another look, so.
Okay.
There's some optimism.
So is your recommendation on this one as well, to carry it over?
Yes.
And then send this to budget hearings?
And this is ARPA funding, right?
Yeah, this is ARPA funding, yes. We, you know, we only have a certain amount of ARPA. Exactly, that's what I thought, exactly. Okay, so any questions for Mr. Smith on that one? Okay, we'll carry that over without objection, and send it to finance, to budget hearings for next week. Okay, great. Well, we're not gonna, it's, it's gonna have to be in, in one of our me, our meeting next week, because unless you get all your answers by tomorrow, we'll be...
I won't have them all.
I, I doubt you will, so I'm just saying... Additional funds, yeah. That's right, that's right. Okay, one more opportunity for you to spend some money here, Mr. Smith. 03-08-22, bid date was held again today at 4:30 for College Avenue Stormwater Improvements. And we got one bid on that one, too.
We got one bid by Southeastern Seal Coating, again, base bid amount was 776,433, and we had a deductive alternate for 15,652, for a total bid amount of 760,781. And again, I would recommend to carry this over and see if we can discuss...
All right, okay.
With a, with a contractor, see if they would be interested in price reduction.
And again, that's ARPA, but, right.
Is that right?
Very large, very large number. Okay, any questions on that? Okay, we're gonna carry that over without objection, and send that to budget hearings to determine if we can do any of these. Okay. Well, you have one more, don't you, here?
Thank you, Kale.
You have, yeah, we have your 05-08-22, public hearing set. Oh, that's 26, you're dismissed. Okay, good, the, these next items are my favorite. 05-08-22, that's set for the 26th to consider revisions to the tree and landscape ordinance. So we're gonna, that's carried over until the 26th without objection. All right, 05-05-22, public hearing set for October 10th for vacation right away at 16th Street adjacent to 2901 Central Avenue. That is also going to be carried over for the hearing that's set for October 10th. 1507-22, public hearing set for November 14th, we keep pushing these out, I like it, at 6:00 PM for consideration of annexation for Board of Education property into the city of Homewood. We're gonna carry that over for the November 14th meeting. 09-08-22, request to accept grant item for historic preservation commission. Eddie Griffith, and we have a report from finance, I've asked Mrs. Smith to provide a report to us for finance tonight, so.
Um, yes, committee met on August 29th and heard from Mr. Griffith about the grant, and the committee voted three to zero to recommend accepting the grant, which is for the Travel Stories app. And the motion was made by myself and seconded by Mr. Harden.
Great.
Do you have any questions?
We, yeah, we need a copy of the grant.
I gave the committee one when I was here.
Well, we'll never see it again.
That's true.
Email it to me, Mr. Griffith, I can put on my email, do you know if you emailed it to me?
Actually, I think I do have it.
But in the, in the interim time, I would move to approve.
Well, we, we already have a report from finance.
Yes, yes, yeah, oh, that's right, it's, it's already an emotion.
Doesn't even require a second, so all in favor of the proposed motion, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, that passes, nine to zero. We have what?
Resolution 142.
Oh, 142.
Double check me.
140, I believe that's right, 'cause we carried over so many things.
I know.
Yeah, 142, resolution 142. Okay, 1108-22, request to amend FY21-22 budget for park and rec. Mrs. Smith, report from finance.
Yes, committee voted three to zero to recommend approving the amended budget, motion made by my, by myself and seconded by Mr. Harden.
Any questions on that one? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, that passes nine to zero, that's Resolution 22-143. 1208-22, request to amend FY21-22 budget for the Fleet Department. Gordon James, report from finance, Mrs. Smith?
Yes, voted three to zero to recommend approving this amendment to the budget as well, motion made by myself and seconded by Mr. Harden.
Thank you for that report. Any questions? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, that passes nine to zero, Resolution 22-144. 1308-22, request for consideration of amendment to easement requested by Freshwater Land Trust. A, a report from Mrs. Andrews.
Yes, the committee voted four to zero to recommend approval with, with the compensation section removed, with the one section about the compensation, we removed that. The motion was made by Counselor Sims, seconded by Counselor Gualtney.
Thank you for that report, any questions for Ms. Andrews?
Yes, Mr. Sims, you look like you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Counselor. I just, follow up, it looks like there was one per the Freshwater Land Trust, and follow up, they asked for conditional approval on this pending the future review of the baseline, which is still not attached, so just wanted to reference that. And also, I had a question that I want clarified, which, so, Mr. Kendrick, you sent the legal description as Exhibit A, I believe, on Friday, and I was just wondering, does that legal match the initial legal of the initial agreement? It does? Oh, fantastic, okay, thanks.
Yes, it is the same legal, this Elizabeth Sims of Freshwater Land Trust, so.
So that's an affirmative, yeah.
Thank you, and then the baseline, is that so accurate that it's conditional for that? 'Cause that's not being assessed yet.
It is, so the baseline documentation report is required to be completed as an update of current condition, so it has to be timed when the easement will be granted, so. That's it.
You don't have to put your address, just your, your name of Freshwater.
I will, thank you.
And just, I guess one thing I don't know about the history of this property, and it is one of the concerns that I heard, was that previously some of the trees on the property were mistakenly cut, and so the baseline may be different, so I guess that'll be reconciled this time around? Or are you familiar with any of that?
The cutting or trimming of the trees was done, my understanding was prior to the conservation easement being granted, so it should've been documented at the time of the original baseline, and, and will again be on the current update, yeah.
Great, thank you, I just, I didn't know the timeline of the history, really appreciate that, and thanks so much for everything y'all do.
We're excited, thank y'all.
And, and I apologize, if I'd known you were out there, we would've had this item earlier in the agenda, so thank you for staying, I'm sure you learned a lot.
I go to many city council meetings, so I love to see it.
Okay, so you just...
I'm a regular at Pinson and Clay, so I'm glad to be in Homewood. Thank y'all.
Okay, so we have an approval from, from the committee, all in favor of this, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, that passes nine to zero, that's Resolution 22-145. Okay, and you can see the committee referral, review that. Is there a motion to approve the committee referral agenda?
So moved.
Okay, Mrs. Smith, seconded by Mr. Gualtney. Any other questions, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, that's nine to zero, that passes. Okay, moving on to other new business. 09-09-22, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 1604 Roseland Drive, you did warn us, didn't you? So we'll set the public hearing for September 26th without objection, so.
Hey, can I, that's, that's budget night, do we, would we rather maybe move that out a little bit?
Completely up to you, the ne, the next time we can have that is the 26th, but we can certainly move it to the 10th. We have a lot of other items on, on the 10th.
Yeah, I, I just feel like that...
So maybe I can chair that meeting, too. So, so, okay, so we'll, we'll move that to October 10th. Okay. Yes, exactly, okay, so without objection, that'll be set for October 10th. Okay, 1009-22, request to set a public hearing for consideration of front yard fence variance, 1919-28 St. South, Suite 141, we'll set that for October 10th as well. Hearing no objection to that, so we'll, we'll set it for that. 1109-22, request set public hearing for consideration of Homewood Abatement Board's recommendation for condemnation of the dwelling structure at 117 Hena Street. That could be at also October 10th, is that right, Ms. Salter?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that would be October 10th without objection.
Could you, could you move it later in October?
We could do...
Sorry, I'm trying to like, run the schedule.
We could do 1024, let's do 1024 on that, without objection, 1024, yeah, that'll relieve a little bit. Okay. So that's 1024, so that was 11, yeah, that was 11. 09-22, 1209-22, request to set public hearing to consider declaring public property located at 121 Summit Parkway, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinance 1910-1750. Are we okay if this is October the 10th, Mr. Cook? Okay, so we'll have that on October 10th without objection. 1309-22, request to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 139 State Farm Parkway, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinance 1910-1750 excessive growth. We'll set that for October 10th without objection. 1409-22, request for consideration of an ABC 040 retail, retail bill beer on and off premise, and an ABC 60 retail table wine for Buca located at 186 Oxmoor Road. As I understand, we, we have letters of no objection, both from fire and police. Those, those have all been completed, so the proper motion would be to, as to having no objection to the issuance of this ABC license.
So moved.
Okay, moved, is there a second? Second, okay, I'm seeing Ms. Nelms down there with a second. I like that. I like it, I like it. Okay, that's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, that passes nine to zero. 1509-22, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for period August 23rd through September 12th, and that has been handled by Mr. Harden, so, Mr. Harden, you have a report for us?
Yes, I, I found everything to be in order, including something Ms. Salter sent to me late today, so... Yeah, I got it, you're a little late for somebody, but that's okay. So I make a motion to approve the vouchers for the period of August 23rd, 2022 through September 12th, 2022.
Okay, it's been moved, does anyone support Mr. Harden here? Okay, second. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give that to Mrs. Gere, okay, seconded by Mrs. Gere. Any que, any other questions, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, that's nine to zero, that passes. Comments from the mayor? Okay, thank you, any other liaison reports? Any, any other reports that we might have? Okay, announcements, Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir, Counselor Jones, I will set public safety for after finance. I assume finance is gonna start at five?
Yeah, five, yeah.
And otherwise, I have no other comments.
Great, okay, thank you, Counselor Gere?
Yes, the Sims Garden Pumpkin and Mum sale... Uh, yes, the Sims Garden Pumpkin and Mum sale is underway, and everything looks great. They have giant pumpkins. I mean, really like the great pumpkin, so you might wanna go by and check it out. Everything looks great over there, and they're ready to do some fundraising, so just letting, you know, thank, thank you.
Thank, thank you, councillor Gier. Councillor Alamon?
Yes, just wanted to remind everyone that we'll have our city manager hearing this Thursday at 5:30 PM in council chambers, for anyone who wants to attend, it's open to the public. And I also wanted to congratulate Mayor McCloskey for joining Leadership Birmingham and joining councillor Anderson and myself as members of that club, so congratulations.
Wonderful. I have to brag that I've been rejected 20 years in a row. So I'm, I'm, I'm proud of you, but I have every, I have every rejection letter that was ever sent, and I show it to my children, that maybe sometime in 20 more years, I might be appointed.
You might, you might prove yourself worthy.
I'm happy for the, for both of you, so, anyway.
You just have not served enough, Walter, you've not, 25 years is not quite enough.
I know, I haven't, they probably, they probably say, yeah, you're, you're over, over scheduled. Okay, yeah, no, I'm not over, okay, councillor Sims?
Thank you, councillor Jones. I mean, honestly, we'll start Leadership Homewood, and it can be the founding member, I'm, I'm here for it. So I just, I did have one board liaison report, beautification board met today, and they, you know, closing out the fiscal year, approved some funds for a couple of items, including new tables and chairs in the Edgewood Common Area in front of the shops at Edgewood and Broadway, or Oxmoor and Broadway. Also have some funds set aside for the historical commission sign, which was damaged, I think, almost two years ago now. So we're trying to patch funds together to replace that, so working with JJ, and also Eddie Griffith, and some beautification board funds to make that happen, 'cause it's actually $4,000 to replace that, so trying to source from, from various places and replace the sign. We also approved some funds for visibility when they have cleanup projects, and also approved funding for holiday decor, which will be for the front of City Hall for this coming holiday season. So just wanted to give you all some updates on that. And then finally, I was able to attend the 9/11 remembrance ceremony yesterday in Visavia, which is co-hosted by the cities of Homewood and Mountain Brook and Visavia. It was a really great ceremony. It's always great to, you know, support all, all our public, our first responders, you know, through that ceremony, and remember those that lost their lives that day. It's hard to believe it's been 21 years. It's, you know, the, the single most, you know, fatal event in our country's history for both the fire department and the police department in one given day. So it really is, you know, just something to look back on and, and always remember those lives that changed so much that day and, and really our country. And with that, also want to reference that next year, Homewood will actually be hosting the ceremony, so looking forward to taking part of that next year on September 11th. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sims. Councillor Smith?
Um, so first to continue my annoyingness for this meeting, did we actually vote to approve the vouchers?
Yes.
Okay, totally.
We did.
Laid on that one, sorry. And I will set special issues for after public safety. I don't guess in anybody's setting Andrew's meeting, so he can go at the end. So I'll do special issues.
He's on his own.
I'll do after public safety, and no more comments from me.
Okay, great. Councillor Nelms?
Uh, yes, just to update, we had our Sanford liaison and all things work for meeting tonight, and basically just got to meet all the new leadership at Sanford, and introduced them to our neighbors, and addressed past problems, current, you know, projects, and the progress that Sanford's made on a lot of the things that were issues, say, two years ago. And it was a good meeting.
Wonderful, wonderful.
We do have an item, I don't know.
Could you wait, let me set. Can we set P and D first?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll just call it for after special issues. Yeah, we'll just call it.
I was, I was gonna set it, but I was gonna set mine first.
All right, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right, okay, we'll get to that. He'll be last. Okay, councillor Andrews?
Yes, with that, I will set P and D to follow special issues, and then I would request, you know what, we need to go ahead and set public work, so why don't we do that to follow P and D?
Yeah, that, we'll follow that, P and D, that's right, yeah.
Never mind, I gotta be your olive, I just didn't want to.
Right. I was like, I was, I was like hoping Nelms wasn't gonna say anything, I was like, don't let her say it, don't let her say it. I just wanted to remind everybody, it's homecoming week, so Thursday afternoon, the parade will be down here, starting at 4:30, and the football game, seven o'clock Friday night, and Saturday will be dance, so I just wanted to let everybody know. Happy homecoming.
You forgot something. And Will Andrews is Mr. Homewood.
Mr. Homewood. I love it, love it. All right, Mr. Harden?
Will Andrews being Mr. Homewood is a big deal on our street, apparently. I, I also had the chance to go to the 9/11 thing, I did not see Mr. Sims there, but the guy speaking was a friend of mine, and it is a moving thing. It's gonna be on a Monday for us, which is gonna make it probably even a little more difficult to get a crowd there. Mountain Brook had a big crowd, but they made it more of a festival, I think, if I remember right. But JJ recommended maybe we get the school kids to come for it, so, anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, did I miss anything, Ms. Salter? Did we miss anything on the agenda? Okay. Okay, thank you for your patience with me tonight as we worked through the, a very challenging agenda. I would've gone faster if I could, but thank you for all your participation, I'm honored to have served with you, it was great, going to the football game and hanging out with councillor Nelms and councillor Harden, so we, we stood there and watched her say hello to everybody that walked by, 'cause everybody knows her and loves her. But anyway, it's, it's just great to be, be a part of this group, and hope you have a wonderful week, so we're adjourned from our meeting. Thank you.